Yeah, one second.
There's pizza over there. It's pretty good. I just had a nice slice. I should have two slices. You want a slice?
Okay, there we go. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is five o'clock here, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Daniel Beach, Florida, for a special meeting. Clerk, can you please call roll?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lawland.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Salvino is absent. City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis.
Here.
Mayor Yavacorm.
Okay, all right. This meeting is regarding advertising within our city, and we have a guest here, and Commissioner Davis, you'd like to introduce her?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited to bring Camilla Clark here from Visit Lauderdale. As you know, I think last meeting I spoke and talked about how we talked to Stacy Ritter at the MODS Museum during the Ignite exhibit and talked about different ways that they are advertising tourism for all thirty-one municipalities and especially the coastal ones. So I had a wonderful connection and conversation with Camilla Clark, who is the Senior Vice President of Marketing and Communications for Visit Lauderdale, and she has agreed to come and just kind of give us an update and let us know what the potential is for partnerships and opportunities for advertising in Lauderdale. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, for inviting me, and I really wanted to take this opportunity to kind of showcase what we're doing for Greater Fort Lauderdale. Our responsibility is to promote all thirty-one municipalities, and certainly Daniel Beach falls within that. And we have taken the last year and a half to two years to create a full campaign. So we did full branding for digital, print, as well as our broadcast media. We have put together a campaign that I strongly believe represents the destination in its entirety. They are opportunities for us to specifically promote Daniel Beach, and I think that as we move forward, and I'm really glad that, you know, the timing was really perfect for us to come together and incorporate what you all are doing with your potential rebranding into what we're doing overall. So what I'd like to do is show you a quick video of sort of the evolution of our brand, some of the behind the scenes for our campaign, and then also to share with you the branding.
For six days in August, we took over Greater Fort Lauderdale to film a new branding campaign. Our mission: to show who we are as a community and just how special this destination is in every bold, beautiful, surprising, and welcoming way. This campaign goes to the heart of what makes our community great: the welcoming vibe, diverse offerings, and diverse people. And we're giving a warm welcome to everyone, as our new brand tagline says: "Everyone Under the Sun."
Our residents here in Greater Fort Lauderdale hail from one hundred and seventy countries. Diversity is truly in our DNA, and we champion it every day. So we wanted that commitment reflected in this campaign by using talent of all ages, ethnicities, and more.
We welcome all visitors with open minds and hearts, regardless of who they are or where they come from. Because when we say "everyone under the sun," we mean "everyone under the sun."
We are so proud to be known as Florida's LGBT+ capital, and we are also dedicated to increasing awareness of accessibility features throughout the destination. As part of this campaign, we're featuring local members of our LGBT+ community, as well as those with disabilities who enjoy the accessibility that Greater Fort Lauderdale offers.
All individuals have the right to feel respected, accepted, and valued, and we embrace all visitors with wide-open, welcoming arms. And we want everyone to enjoy all that our amazing destination has to offer. Everyone.
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 Every- one.
Everyone under the sun.
So that's just a snippet of sort of the behind the scenes of how the campaign came together. But what we did is, two years ago, we went through a rebranding and changed our tagline to "Everyone Under the Sun" to demonstrate exactly who we are. And then also, we went through the campaign launch. So I'll give you another quick snippet of the video. There's one more video of the full campaign. But then the ma- oh, there we go. I'll play it. The next one. Oh, I think I did that. Sorry. I'm gonna stop touching buttons. So as you can see, we showcased our waterways, our water communities throughout our campaign, and I think that, you know, this is really a great opportunity for us to partner. Our campaigns go across the globe and internationally, and it will give us an opportunity to work with you all to help tell that story. So I just want to open it up for any discussion in how we can work together, but, you know, certainly am open to partnering with you all. And actually, it's not over. But there are other opportunities for us to work together through...
Do we want to have discussion right now, a little bit?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay. Well, I just, I just really am excited about what you've shown here. I just think in that very small snippet, you've shown how much work it goes into branding and rebranding so that, you know, you're inclusive of everyone, and it definitely shows the diversity of Greater Fort Lauderdale. But right here in Daniel Beach, we have a lot of diversity. We have the waterways, we have the marina, we have the food. So I just see that we can, we're a little microcosm of a bigger, of a bigger picture, and if we can highlight what we have, and what I've noticed too is that you have really high-definition, high-quality videos. Obviously, that takes a certain amount of investment. Maybe you'll share some of those insights with us, but I know that when you're doing something quality, that's gonna have the potential to have that global reach, that you need to invest in that, in that kind of high-digital quality. But I really appreciate that you've shown the diversity of all different people, and then with one message, "Everyone Under the Sun," reiterated. So I just see us being a smaller example of that and wanting to see how maybe potentially we can, we can use our Daniel Beach, what we have right here, our waterways, our beach, our restaurants, to partner with Visit Lauderdale to make us bigger and make us a destination, location, and city as well.
Absolutely. And in addition to our campaign, we also have our website and all of our other owned media. So our social media, our website, our e-newsletters. There's tons of opportunities for you to tap into that resource and to tell your story through our platforms. So we have, of course, representation on our website. If there are things going on, we have events pages on our website that we can include things that are happening here in Daniel Point, Daniel Beach. But there's definitely opportunities, and I think that, you know, as we continue to work together, we can identify those and figure out where it fits in perfectly. But there's certainly, there's a window there where you all can get in. Because we are going through this transition, you are going through a rebranding. I'm happy to offer up my services to help you through that process and, you know, walk you through. But again, our ser- we are here to serve you. So, you know, if there are opportunities within our own platforms, then we're happy to incorporate you in that.
Excellent.
So we would be advertised under Visit Fort Lauderdale?
So it's a number of ways. So some of it is just within the Greater Fort Lauderdale marketing campaign. We also do co-op or business participation programs where we can bring in the different destinations in paid advertising that we've already purchased. So there's opportunities in both ways, and then there's all the free that we can do on social. So yes, it would be within the umbrella of Greater Fort Lauderdale, but definitely it would highlight what your destination has to offer.
Have any other cities in the county participated in this?
We have not offered it up yet.
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're gonna be the first ones in. So it's a great, again, as I was saying, the timing is absolutely perfect because we're just starting the business participation program where we're bringing in the cities. We've met with a number of the coastal city, coastal cities to help bring it together, but this is really the first step out, and, you know, you're right there.
That, that, that's kind of what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna ask was, have you, like, are you featuring other cities that are in the surrounding area or that are within the county?
Absolutely. So our, our tenant is to promote all thirty-one municipalities. So we do that throughout our campaign and all, absolutely, on our website and through our social. So yes, that's included in our campaign, and it'll be included individually on our website.
So that's, that's what I'm wondering. Like, would it, would it be like, like a video like this for Visit Lauderdale and then just like a couple snippets of things in Daniel Beach? Or would you actually do something directly related to Daniel Beach that's like focused on Daniel Beach and indicating that we're just south of the air, you know, just south of Fort Lauderdale?
We can definitely tell your story in various platforms, whether it be on our website or on social, but yes, we can do it individually. We also put together about a year ago Explore magazines with Island Syndicate, where we showcased each of the cities. So we try to, you know, do that where appropriate, but, you know, through all of our platforms, we're telling the story every day. And as long as we know what's going on, we incorporate it in the messaging that we're sharing through media and all of our paid media.
And nothing against Fort Lauderdale, because I love Fort Lauderdale. I've lived in Fort Lauderdale for quite some time, and I, and, but I don't want us to continue to be confused with Fort Lauderdale, because that does happen quite a bit. I see a lot of people that come in from the airport, and they think they're in Fort Lauderdale when they're in Daniel Beach. So I, you know, we kind of want to make sure they understand that this is a different city and a different location. I actually had somebody say to me last night that they thought Hollywood was part of Fort Lauderdale, was like a section of Fort Lauderdale.
Interesting. So as the tourism marketing person for Greater Fort Lauderdale, I faced that challenge with Miami. So I absolutely feel your pain, and when people come and they post and they say they're in Miami, and I know they're in Greater Fort Lauderdale, same thing. So we understand that, and we're, we're working really hard to define that, and I think the key is to differentiate yourself, and that's what we've tried to do with our new branding. And I think as we do that moving forward, with each of our municipalities, we'll be able to better tell that story. But it starts with one, so why not it be you?
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, you got to ask some of the questions that I had. Since this would be the first city that you are, you know, kind of giving this to or showing this to, what does it look like financially as far as our participation? Do you have tiers of different levels?
Yeah, so we're still building out what it's gonna look like, because we haven't purchased the media yet for the summer. But we're looking at tiers from anywhere from five thousand to forty thousand, and that could include everything from a fifth of a page in an ad to a full-page ad alongside our advertising campaign.
Okay, because I want to obviously to make sense. I understand what Vice Mayor is speaking of, because I do agree with what she's saying, but I do think that there also are opportunities for us to, you know, be engaged and be involved in different marketing in different cities as well. But, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that service kind of looks like. I know you say you're offering us your service to walk us through that. What does that look like when you said "walk us through that"?
So as you all start looking at organizations or other firms to help you go through your rebranding, I'd offer my service as Visit Lauderdale's marketing person to sit on a committee with you, to provide my expertise in terms of how that transition happens, how you go through the rebranding process, what media you should be going after. So it's just, you know, providing our service to you as a municipality.
I just want to be clear, we have already rebranded. So we rebranded a few years ago, and so now we're talking about the different rolling outs of that campaign, continuing to brand ourselves and continuing to expand that footprint of Daniel Beach. But we, I don't think we could go through another rebrand. Another rebranding.
It's painful. I know.
It was, it was a lot of fun, actually. It was a lot of fun. It was very inclusive. Redline Media Marketing helped us rebrand at no cost, but we had, we had to roll that out, and we've done that in phases. But now I think where we are and what we are doing with the evolution of the city of Daniel Beach, we want to make sure that we are attracting and getting our name out there and differentiating ourselves. You know, we have a few hotels that, you know, because of the name Fort Lauderdale is more marketable than Daniel Beach because it's bigger than it has for a lot of them, which I don't like at all. But I want to make sure that we're doing something to help us stand out as a city, because we are very much so self-sufficient in, in what we are doing here, and I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever partnerships that we decide to do with you and other cities and organizations, I want to make sure that we are, we are standing.
Sure, and I just want to say we would be here to compliment, not, you know, envelop. So we want to showcase, because it helps us. I mean, we're, we're all a part of the same county, and we want to tell that story. And if we have unique individual stories throughout the county to tell, then that makes us that much more interesting. You know, people travel because they want to see people, places, and experiences. They want to come and see the authentic things that are offered within a destination. And if each of our, and I know they do, each of our coastal communities offer a different experience, let's showcase that. How do we incorporate that in what we're doing to tell our story? So I agree and understand and, you know, really want to just compliment what you all are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Davis?
Yes. Commissioner James did, whenever we talk about that, we always, we're so proud of our Daniel Beach that we just want to make sure that you, we, and we, we love our logo. We love to see it, live it, love it, and that was the brand, and that's the rebranding process. I do understand that when you're branding that you, it is a marathon and not a sprint, and so it takes years and years and years. Every time I go somewhere, people ask me where I'm from. I say I'm from the city of Daniel Beach. If you've ever flown into the Fort Lauderdale Airport, you're flying into Daniel Beach. See it, live it, love it, and I make them repeat it by the end of the conversation. So I'm very into our brand and what it is. But what I think we're missing here, and what the, a second part of this workshop that I wanted to bring up, is that even though we have Daniel Beach, see it, live it, love it, that association of what that actually means is not clear, you know, when people say that. It's a great tagline, it has great bright colors, but what does that mean when you see Daniel Beach? So I think we have some So I think we have some work to do with branding what that means as opposed to um just saying that we we're looking to rebrand. That's not the, I guess, the terminology that we're looking for. But to make that association much more clearer, much more spectacular and much more uh in your face about what makes Dania Beach unique. People think France, they think Paris, you think love, it's automatic. You know, that's that's what it is. And I think it it kind of, it it's going there, we have the potential to do it, we have the beach, we have a great place to live. We ha- we're showing the love. But I think that direct association with what we have right now definitely needs to be improved upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James?
Yes, in in saying that, I think what we're looking for then more so is a campaign. Because you can have a campaign on something specific, like if you wanted the campaign to to be like Visit Lauderdale as as a campaign, you focus on that campaign, but it doesn't change the brand. It kind of complements what you are doing and it brings awareness to the specific things that you want to bring awareness to. So maybe we focus on a campaign and what the name of that campaign, we don't have to come up with that today. But the focus around that to to make the brand stronger.
If I could just add to that, so when we went through the um Everyone Under the Sun rebranding, uh we did the logo, we did the website. Um we changed everything on our letterhead and such, but we didn't have a campaign. So um when I came on board a year and a half ago, we developed the campaign to support the rebranding. So the brand was out there for a year or so. Um but then now, in October, we launched the campaign, which is now helping us get out in front and tell the story. So through the campaign, you then can do PR, social um and other media opportunities to to tell the story. Because that's what we are. I mean, as marketers, we're storytellers. So we want to be able to, you know, create that nice little campaign so that we can tell the story in various platforms. So I think that, you know, again, happy to help with that, but yeah, I agree.
Perfect, uh Commissioner Davis?
Well, I just wanted to clarify because, again, the the brand, I don't know that. And and if you can tell me what these are, because I I'm looking at two different things. I look at it and I have a a a slide later on with with an iceberg. The marketing is the logo, the design, the advertising and the campaigning. That's like the tip of the iceberg. And then the brand is the architecture, the value proposition, the brand positioning, the brand principles and rules, uh the brand purpose, the brand mission, the brand core values and and the peak performance. So that is actually the the meat of the brand at the at the bottom of the iceberg. So I'm not clear on what that brand is for Dania Beach with the brand principles and the rules and the architecture. I'm not clear on what that is. So for me, I would want us to look at how we're going to clarify that in in addition to the marketing on top where you have the logo, the campaign and just the regular advertising. But for me, I don't I don't see the that we're that we're showing the value proposition of our city. So um I would like help with that.
Got it, and I think that that's fair. So I think that we did the same thing. So when we went through our rebranding, um we had the tagline, um but we didn't know how we were gonna define that. We wanted to include Everyone Under the Sun. We didn't know, you know, our advertising um agency presented us with a number of options for how we could tell this story. But what we landed on was that it was about the people, it was about the experiences and people coming and experiencing that. And I think that, you know, we were able to showcase that. So if if you all can clearly define what it is you want to tell, then it's just a matter of, you know, creating the visual to support that and the storyline that goes with it and making sure it's cohesive. And I don't think it would hurt if it also aligned with what Greater Fort Lauderdale is doing. Because then you're telling the story, you're falling under, you know, within our messaging and it just amplifies what it is you're trying to do.
Excellent, that that's really why, thank you so much for for clarifying that and that that's why I'm glad you're here and and helping us to 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 clarify that information.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so in in clarifying everything, and and I I appreciate that completely, that we need to clarify that we need to determine the direction that we're going and and whatnot with this. Weren't we, and uh this might be a better question for the uh city manager. Weren't we talking about um getting a communications director and that would handle marketing and that sort of thing?
Yes, so through the mayor, um you guys have approved for us to move forward. And um our our CFO is gonna be bringing a mid-year budget adjustment. And we will be bringing um exactly an individual such as yourself. Because we're we're already at a place where we're, we want to get in the big leagues. We're we're a growing city and continue to grow. Um so we're gonna be bringing uh communications and and marketing director um to join our team. Uh in the meantime, um what we've been doing, working with our PIO, as you as you can see, I put in front of you some eh inexpensive, but but yet we're casting a wide net and a reach to Les Soleils de la Floride, which is a French, French Canadian, and we're we are advertising there. We're advertising in in family life in print and digital. We're also advertising in travel host um in print and digital, which is in all our local hotels. Eh last year eh when she was uh our mayor, eh Mayor James, myself and Candido um worked with this Business View magazine, right? And this is uh what it says, Dania Beach, Florida, a seaside jewel, right? So this this was out there and it was a really, really good piece. And we're also working now with our with our PIO to do the twenty twenty-three version of of a very, very cool news newsletter that we're gonna be putting out there that really continues to market our city and what we're doing. So um we're we're taking all these steps um to to do things in in different phases. And I think that's why Commissioner Davis now brought brought this on board with some monies that we had set aside. And then we also have our budget process that we're starting now to see what are the next steps. But yeah, this this branding campaign eh was completed in twenty nineteen, just before I I I got here. We continue to, so when we see see it, live it, love it, she just translated it in in um in in French. And we're looking at, well, how do how do we tap into South America, right? Um and also doing it in Spanish, but using the same see it, live it, love it. Um but in in different languages to attract more more folks.
So with that, I would encourage you, um our global sales team goes out on sales missions around the cu- around the globe um to help market and sell our destination. Um that's an opportunity as well for you all to get out in front of the people that are telling the story, um who are selling the story. And um we have global trade missions that we do with Brand USA. We um we have IPW, which is gonna be um one of the largest international trade shows that's held in the United States, is gonna be in May. We'll be there with representation. I think Hollywood is gonna be there. Um we have a number of our hotel partners and some of the attractions. So those are opportunities to also work with us. And when our sales team is out at conventions and events, participate in those, get involved. Um send a representative so that you are in front of all the people that are making the decisions. At those events, there's always media. Get in front of that media, tell your story. Um media is the cheapest way to tell your story, PR. You want to, you know, you got a good story to tell? Get in front of the media and tell that story. So we have plenty of resources to help you with that. And um again, I'm committed to to help you um in that regard as well.
Uh this is kind of a side note, but that is a good point that I heard was brought up is uh we should focus a lot on these uh major events that happen in South Florida, like uh F1 is coming up soon. So if if there's ways that we can market around those events to bring in the extra traffic that comes in, I think I think that's a a good idea for sure.
Mayor, you hit the nail on the head. Uh last month, we met with the folks in Dania Point and Commissioner Davis and and Candido was with us. And they they have hired a marketing and communications director and a tourism person. So they're looking at what Miami's doing, they're looking at the calendar of of what Fort Lauderdale and Broward is doing. Now we're gonna be working with them and and their calendar and the casino. And 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 we're turning a hundred and twenty next year. Um and and it's also with with our new marketing and communications director. It's an it's an opportunity to stay with the see it, live it, love it, but maybe do a year of Broward's First City, turns one twenty, press releases. We're working now with with a committee that we put together with with a special events coordinator that's also part of our team that's coming forward. And we're going to eh rebrand the Dania After Dark and we're gonna get started on on that real soon with themes. And there's going to be a lot of opportunity, you know, for us to really um market our city with these big events, but also ride the coattails of all these big events that are happening to the south and to the north of us. And and that's what we intend to do. And by having that person in place, that person will be that person that will be, you know, meeting with you, with Trace eh eh Stacy Ritter and and all the big players, as well as the the big players in Miami. So we could reap that wave as well, too.
Right, that's great. Um and we do our events calendars, so anything that's going on, we want to incorporate you in that. But also some of the events that we have with the air show, with the boat show, with um Tortuga. I mean, there there's beach festivals, the sea glass, there's tons of events that are happening right up the road. You know, tap into that audience so that, you know, you get a couple overnight stays or you, you know, they want to come here and shop. Or there there's so much to see and do, come down to your beach because it may not be as crowded. Like, it's that simple. It's just, you know, just getting in front and telling that.
Yeah, we have a lot of hotels here and a lot of shovels that are going in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the the beds that are gonna be expanded here and the visitors that are coming here are great, great opportunities for us as well. And and getting, you know, travel host, which is something that we're already doing thanks to to Katia in in those hotels and things in French and things in Spanish, you know, try languages.
Yep.
Um so yeah, we're super excited about all the opportunities.
Great.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yeah, and that and that's really what my point, my whole point was is that it's, I I like the direction we're going. I like the fact that we're trying to expand this and we want to do more and make sure people know who we are and and understand that we're different than just Fort, you know, we're not Fort Lauderdale, we're a separate city. And, you know, we have things to offer as well. Um I just, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. If we know that we're going to be bringing somebody in who's like a subject matter expert on this, that's going to be, you know, being able to centralize everything and kind of determine what what really works best for us. Because they're the subject matter experts, not us. So anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh Commissioner James?
Yes, I guess I need clarity of what we're doing um up up here as far as this workshop then. Because I I know that I kind of brought that same concern before about waiting because we had someone. But then I thought these funds were for to to kind of market where we are right now. So I I I guess I need to know if we're using these funds to market right now and then look to the future. Because I do think that we need a hundred and twentieth year campaign, right? So we need a logo, we need um some type of a tagline and we need to use that starting, I I guess, January. But we need to work on that, we should be working on that now. And maybe right now, we should be focused on how we want to spend the monies that we budgeted for to do the marketing that we are choosing to choose now. So I don't want to get too far in the weeds of where we're going with different campaigns uh in the future rather than discussing how we can market our city and what we're doing now.
Yeah, you you brought up a good point, Commissioner James. Um look, we have the money to advertise and it, I I I've heard that, you know, I know if it's true, but I heard that we haven't spent all of our contingency most years. So I I I I plan on spending every penny this year. And I, we should, it's 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 budgeted for it, yeah. So uh, you know, with rising tides raise all ships. And I think this is a good idea, maybe we don't have to go for the full package, but it's definitely something just to get the ball rolling. I think it's a lot, a lot more useful with our funds than just uh, you know, paying that a a large amount of money at the airport. I think this is more centralized and concentrated. And uh I just had a couple of questions for you, though, actually. Uh can you describe your your staff?
Oh, I Greater Fort Lauderdale, our staff, so just the marketing team, we have a team of seven.
Yeah, who we would be dealing with, yeah.
Yeah, so we have um PR, marketing uh and digital are the key platforms. Um we have one person on our digital team, one marketing, one PR. We're recruiting currently, I mean, we have contracts person and we have some other people. But um it's it's, we're pretty small and mighty. Um ultimately, we should have about nine once we're fully staffed, but we're at about six, six.
And so if we if we brought you on board, it wouldn't be like overwhelming or anything, right? You guys, you just finished this campaign?
We were, we are, we are responsible for promoting you all. We, you're not hiring us, right? We, you're an extension of us.
Okay.
So we're here to serve.
We're just paying you to get the extra boost.
Well, it would be to buy media would be where the money would be spent. It would be collaborating with us on the paid media. But, you know, in terms of the resources that we have available, our own um platforms, whether it be the website, social, et cetera, that's all part of being in the county.
Okay, and can you describe your marketing locally and nationally? Globally, locally and globally, I guess, because you said globally.
So we have, you know, print, digital um and our web-based marketing. Most of our our paid media goes to digital. Um we do a lot on Yahoo, um Yahoo, on YouTube and um Gl- uh Google. Um and we are really focused on um sort of digital first. So we, most of our campaigns, all of our campaigns are avail- available through our um pushed, paid um social. We also have print advertising that we do um in key publications. Most recently, we had a um our ad running in Times Square in New York. We did a partnership with Good Morning America, um and we're featured in a four-minute segment on Good Morning America. So we're doing that. In addition, we have our um global team that is going out internationally. And they're going to events and trade shows throughout the world to um meet with two operators who then sell the product. So again, it the the opportunities are endless in terms of how we can partner together and how we can expand and amplify what you all are doing.
Thank you very much for that clarification, really appreciate it. Uh Commissioner James, I mean Davis, Joyce Davis?
There we go.
It's all good.
JD, TJ.
They they mix us up all the time, it's all good.
I'm just gonna say Commissioner JD.
I like it, as long as you put commissioner in front of it, we can work it out. Um there are, there's a couple of things, because there, this is, this is, this is new um as far as we're we're putting monies to this, to our advertising budget for the first time. I think there's short-term, there's long-term. We have the, we budgeted the hundred thousand dollars. Uh last workshop, we decided we were gonna do fifty thousand for just the airport. Now, I want, I like to bring in people like you to kind of, to to break things down and kind of put things in perspective. Um not not to just say we need to do one thing all of a sudden, but to try to um to really create the big picture of where we're going uh in the future. When the manager, Candido and I sat down with with Dania Point, we we talked about, they have, they're they're branding firms. They're martech companies. It's not necessarily a job for just one communications director or one communications person. Each one of those people has different competencies within a specific area. And so it's not like a one-man show for, you know, one person to be the brand expert and and guide us. But they have connections within entire firms. And so I want to make sure that we're not being uh shortsighted with saying that we're gonna have one, one person, you know, to be the branding expert. And and I really want to make sure that we dig deep in order to look at all the options. But what I would like to see from you, just from from, to to know is if we have different packages that you could put together for us to be able to come back and look at to see what our options are going forward, and then we can kind of consider that. But I think we have the short-term, what we want to do right now in this fiscal year. And then we have a longer term where we really want to look at the entire story and look how we're, you know, branding our our entire city. So um that, I just wanted to put that out there. Because is it your experience that it's it's that you're working with different firms in order to do different things? And can you kind of explain what those different job functions are within the firm?
Sure, so we currently work with um Aqua Marketing and they can, they handle all of our paid media, so that's one segment. Um we have a a creative team, which is responsible for sort of the, you know, writing the copy or creating the layouts for our ads. Um and then we have the PR side that is responsible for all media relations. Um with, that's within the agency. We also have an individual on staff who is responsible for man- managing those segments within the agency. Um and then we have support staff that then support those leads. So in that, you know, it expands our um our reach because we have the agency, we have our expertise, and then we have our staff. So there are many vehicles by which we can do that. Um I did want to touch on the airport thing because um we're in the process of partnering with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance to help um get into the airport and advertise within the air- airport. We realize that Clear Channel is the only way you can advertise in the airport. We realized that clear channel is the only way you can advertise in the airport. Um, and we've decided that we're going to have to just pay for it because it's the only way we're getting in. Um, so um, we're working with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance to help build a campaign that showcases the entire area, whether it be the um uh organizations that are here, the businesses that are here. Um, but also to tell the story from a tourism perspective. So we'll be telling not only the visitor perspective, but also um the residential perspective um through the alliance. So we're already building that campaign. And of course, you all would be included in that because we are by virtue, you know, of our um existence here to promote you too. Um, if you look at the Spirit headquarters being built, we're partnering with Spirit um on that campaign. We've already involved them, we've already talked to them, they're they're in. So again, like, we're having the conversations. Now that you all are in the conversation, you know, through me, we will definitely um make it a priority to ensure that you're included in, at a minimum, the the complimentary services that we provide to uh the municipalities. Um, I will then also be sure to get you a package from our advertising firm on the uh participation program, the business participation program, so that you can find out exactly how much those pa- packages will cost.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You're good? Okay. All right, I I think we're good. Um, if you ask me, I'd like to move forward at, once we review the packages. Yeah, we just have to see everything, but I I think we should definitely invest in this. Um, it's a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll have the T, our agency is building them out as we speak. So um I would say within the month, we'll have um complete programs for the summer, um upcoming summer programs. Sure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, not for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'm just asking where we're, what decisions we're gonna kind of try and unofficially make now um with this. Oh, I didn't know if this was just for this presentation. Because la- okay, so last time we had, right, last time we had this conversation, we were trying to discuss different ways that we can market and at what price point that we could market. And then I'd seen, I mean, City Manager sent us an email with some other options of of things that we, that I would like to try and um maybe see how that looks. So I I just, while we're here and we're talking about marketing, I know that it, there were some paintings on, I don't know if it was the the garage or if it was the top of City Hall or or some different types of ways that we could be spending the monies. Um, you know, not every penny, Mayor, but just, just seeing how we can break up that budget to maximize the the impact or 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 the effect. Because um, you know, we are very, very close to the airport and I think those are some really good ideas. And so I would like to see us uh contemplate or or maybe flirt with those ideas a little bit. City Manager, could you?
Yes, through the mayor. Um, Katia had been working on some things for us and she did some great research, taking advantage of the flight path that we're, that we're on. And the fact that as planes, planes begin to descend, they're practically going over some of our facilities, including, including City Hall. And I know that the art board had been focusing on a certain type of of art. But there's no reason why we cannot use the top of City Hall as a nice canvas with Dana Beach, See It, Live It, Love It and and our logo and something cool. Um, and and as we begin to d- design our our different facilities, I think using rooftops. And that's something that the the mayor had discussed with me, activating rooftops. Well, there's so many ways that you can activate rooftops, from cafes to advertising. So we're looking at that, we're we're looking um at 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 using you guys, you know, to also be the the face of our city and and some city staff and begin to do, you know, some videos and things like that. But there's great opportunities out there. No, not your rooftop. Using you guys to do, to do videos.
And I wanted to to also see if there's an opportunity for us to do those videos that we that we have done before and use some of the budget to do that, because I I think that that went over well. It really highlighted a lot of our businesses. It gives each of us the opportunity to, you know, choose whatever business you want it to go to. I know we have new, you know, elected officials here and I I had a lot of fun doing that. And that was a, that was a a cost-effective way that we were able to, one, show our personalities individually and, two, market businesses that maybe people never even knew of. Um, because the success of our businesses is definitely the success of us too. And and that's also a part of, you know, marketing and and branding. So I'm not sure if we wanted to do that.
I think you guys did a great job and 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 Brian Andrews is someone that that I worked with in in my in my previous city. But whether it's the mayor and his family on our, I don't, you know, our our waters or, you know, fishing or um, you know, doing what what Commissioner did. Yeah, but on a boat in the city.
Do you remember the budget for that?
I I I could look it up and see with with Frank how much we spent for each one of those, but it was a really great campaign.
Yeah, I mean, because even if we had to decide and that didn't meet that budget, I know that we still have contingencies as well. But I I do want to make sure that we're continuing certain things that we do and not just a one and done, especially when it's successful. So I think it's been successful. I think we did two rounds of it. I think it would, I mean, it's been a while, it's after COVID and and businesses are still getting back to normal. And I think it'll be awesome and, you know, to be able to do that again. Thank you.
I think it would be great. And I think as we tie it to, you know, it was going to be a surprise, but we're we're planning to have a big bash. We're going to have different events leading to our big hundred and twentieth. I I mean, our, you know, yesterday we were on on a call with Katia and Candido and the and the team from um, from Parks and Recreation and and Bill and 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 Mike from the CRA. Um, but our our city turns a hundred and twenty in November. So i- i- imagine a big bash for Dana After Dark, but we're going to be doing a lot of events leading to towards that, you know? So we're we're super excited about that. But I I think within this Dana Beach, See It, Live It, Love It, there needs to be a brand or there needs to be a, a, a.
A theme.
Like a hundred and twentieth, something cool, whether it's bringing Broward's first back or maybe of like, come visit Dana Beach, you know, or or, you know, it's kind of like the old and the new. And we're not there yet in regards to what it's going to be. We definitely need a tagline for the one twentieth.
Yeah.
Something really cool. And then you guys can can kick off this advertising and then we could work with with them. I think seeing your menu would be ideal as well.
So can I, okay, eh, just two things. Um, my only concern about doing those videos again with the individual businesses, wasn't there some discussion that there might be an issue with that, with us doing that, promoting individual businesses?
I think this way you do it, this time around, we were, we were doing the individual businesses because we were dealing with COVID.
Right. And so it was okay for that, but what I'm saying is.
I think you now you make it about the city. I think you make it about our 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 beaches, you make it about the activities. What you can do in Dana Beach.
There was, it was a legal issue and it had to do with with us, that was, wasn't there something ethics or, it was, there was something that there was a concern.
I remember it came up. I'll I'll go pull the tapes and see what what Tom had said, but I remember that it had come up.
Something, yeah.
I think somebody said, why didn't they pick me or something like that?
I I I feel like there was, there was something that was said about it and it came from legal about there being a, a concern.
Maybe a challenge by some of the businesses, but I'll pull it up from what Tom had done at that time.
But there was a concern about it and the appearance of it and that sort of, that, I just want to make sure that we're all on on above board on it and not doing anything that could end up getting the city into trouble at some point in time. The other thing, but to get back to what Commissioner James has said about what we're doing with with this money that we have now and what our decisions are, we, since we know that we're going to be getting something in another month, um I presume that Commissioner Davis has something else she wants to present to us today. Um, why don't we just take what we're doing today, plus whatever other things we get um from this meeting and the other items that have already been provided to us and then come back for a final decision? And maybe by that point, we'll be at a position where we'll actually have somebody in place or we'll be closer to getting somebody in place who wouldn't necessarily be the one person doing it, but would be the person who would be the point person, who could then go out and identify the different options that we have for the future and then could potentially come to us with some recommendations and then bring things to us. So that we're not the ones going out there necessarily and bring, I mean, we can always go out there and bring out, bring other ideas, but have somebody who's a subject matter expert who can kind of e- evaluate things a little better for us and give us a better sense of where we're going to get our monies worth. Um, so that's all. I'm just thinking that we come back after we have everything, have a comprehensive package and then discuss it at that point. Yes? Makes sense? Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Davis?
No, that that was going to be, I was like, we, I have a whole airport thing that we're following up on that we talked about the last time. So I do want to kind of go over that because we we did have specific monies that we said we were going to set aside for that. And maybe, you know, I don't know, I don't know how long you want to stay here, Camilla, but if if, if she could, you know, but because you're doing something with the airport, we're doing something with the airport. And then we come back to at the end and have a full discussion. Because what I'm hearing are are great ideas, but they're kind of disjointed. And and I think that, you know, having a full story and figuring out what that story is, is is really, really important. And that we're always singing the same story uh throughout. So with that, I don't want to just stay in this particular conversation. I agree with uh Vice Mayor Llewellyn to to move through what we have to do and then come back and see if we can uh narrow some things down based on the information presented. So with that, Ralph, are we ready to go to the next presentation?
Um, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Commissioner James?
When will you provide, excuse me, the mayor, when will you provide those documents?
She said about a month.
Oh, good, about a month, thank you so much.
No, I was just, I I guess I was saying basically the same thing, but I wanted to make sure. I don't, I don't want to just um budget all of the money and then have someone new come in and they have their own ideas and then there's not room. So whatever we're going to do, I think we need to save a percentage, um, you know, to the new person. I I I just, I I would hate to get someone new and then they have recommendations and changes and it's no room for them to be creative on their own. So I think. Yes, it could be directed, I mean, we do the same thing with City Manager, but she have a whole bunch of ideas she come and bring back to us. I know, I'm just saying, it's not a bad thing, but it's from their experiences and we never know if those things are we going to like. So I think whatever we're doing, maybe we save twenty percent or a certain percentage or they they need to have a budget of their own to kind of operate from, especially if we're doing mid-year and expecting them to come in. And and if we are hiring someone for their expertise and their knowledge and then telling them do exactly what we have put in front of you and leaving no room for them to be creative, I think we need to just think, think a little bit about that. Maybe we program seventy-five percent of the money and leave them twenty-five percent or whatever we come up with, just leave that in the back of your mind.
I agree with that.
You're good?
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
All right.
You're up, Commissioner Davis.
All right. So last time, based on, we we, we're, we're such a creative group here. Um, the last time we spoke, we decided a- at that point to spend fifty thousand dollars towards the airport advertising. Um, again, the airport has their own marketing team, their own firms that they, you know, have and that they work with. Um, even if you just look here at the first slide, these are, obviously, the images can be changed, but I want you to just kind of look at where this is located. It is in Terminal One. Uh, we should all know what that seawall is, the Starbucks is right there. And uh, what what they call it is unskippable media. When you're, when you're standing there, you're waiting for your coffee, you have to, you have to look it, you have to see it, you have to live it, you have to love it, you have to see it. So um, this is kind of what they kind of put together temporarily, just come for the savory bites, stay for the romantic nights. Obviously, we could use our 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 different partners with that, whether it be at Dana Point, be it featuring our beach and our pier. But these are just some things that uh they put together just to show us from the beginning. Oh, did my, oh, Ralph, my little buddy's not working. All right. I'm just going to quickly highlight this part again. Some of these I'm going to go through quickly because of the conversation that we've already had. Um, but Fort Lauderdale Airport is getting the thirty, over thirty-six million passengers annually, three million passengers monthly, um, a hundred and two, almost a hundred and three million impressions annually with eight point five million impressions monthly. Uh, the new thing that I wanted to highlight is that because of our specific interest in JetBlue, uh, that they have twenty-five percent of the total traffic. And so they make up twenty-five percent of all the airport traffic. So that is something to consider when we're we're talking about the marketing and advertising. Going to do that. Um, this, I'm going to move on. So I want to move on uh on to the next most important slide again, just to reiterate the monthly traffic by concourse. The total monthly passengers is over three million. But if you look by terminal, by concourse, you can see that Terminal One with thirteen percent in concourse A, twenty-six percent in concourse B and eight percent in concourse C has the most traffic total for Terminal One. So it makes sense to kind of target that terminal uh as far as traffic, as far as advertising and marketing is concerned. Again, um, our our specific interest may entail Spirit and JetBlue with nineteen percent in Terminal Three. Um, but what you all spoke of is kind of putting all of them together and looking at different packages and seeing how we could maximize our costs. So bundle one, these are, there's four different bundles that they put together for us so we could look at the cost effectiveness. Bundle one looks at all of the different places that you guys mentioned as far as baggage claim. Um, baggage claim areas where there, again, it's unskippable media. When your bags come out, you have to sit there, you have to wait for them. And so you have different, uh, you have one in Terminal One, in Terminal Two, Terminal Three, and Terminal Four. So this spreads out all of the advertisement throughout the airport and puts each, um, each, puts each tension fabric display in all four terminals. And I want to show you what the breakdown looks like and what the cost effectiveness is for each one. So in Terminal One, which is the highest traffic area, you have the, where it's going to target, the meters and greeters. You have the size, um, the P I R is the production installation and removal process for what that would be. And the rate card is what it would cost for a twenty-eight day period. So if we were just to get this advertisement by itself, it would be uh that twenty-seven hundred dollars. But if you look at the negotiated net rate, it is over a year, three years and five years. And you can see that each time, the the longer we invest in advertising in the airport, the lower the cost becomes o- over the long period of time. Obviously, they would want us to invest in the five year, but that is just something for all of us to consider. Um, here again is a tension fabric banner, which is in Terminal Two. And there are two of these. So even though you only see one, there's two different tension fabric banners. And again, you see that they have highlighted the pier, come for the pier, stay for the cheer. We are not married to this campaign, but these are things that they've just looked up and kind of come up with on their own to highlight Dana Beach with, based on our colors and based on what they've uh researched from from our city. Um, this one is again, based on, uh, you can see where the little blue dot is. That is exactly where it is located in Terminal Two. And it is based on the rate card, uh, it would be three thousand. And if you look at the negotiated net rate, it goes down for one year, three years and five years. Yeah, there are two. This uh, this display does not show both places, but there's actually two different fabric banners um in in this area. So TFB two, it means tension fabric display, uh, tension fabric banner, and that is in two different locations. Next, we have the uh tension fabric banner in Terminal One. Or this is Terminal Three with tension fabric banner one. And this is the fourth one in the bundle. And you have, you can see where it's located, what the production installation and removal is and the negotiated net rate. So that is Terminal, oh, this is the last one, the column wrap. So this is again in the baggage claim and it's located in Terminal Four. It captures the international arriving passengers and it, as they wait to collect their luggage. Again, you can see that it's located near the bathrooms where there's going to be a lot of traffic going back and forth. And again, you have the one year, the three year and the five year periods. And this is Bundle Two. And pretty much Bundle Two has all the print options, but you can see that they're located in different areas. The wall wrap is in the international area, and then you have the column wrap that's in the baggage claim area of, of the, of baggage claim, of Terminal Four, the tension fabric display that is in baggage claim one, and baggage claim one for the tension fabric banner. Again, you can see the different, you can see the different prices. I think we've already seen this one, where you have the different rate cards for the one year, the three year, and the five year. But this one again is hanging over the Starbucks, which is a in Terminal One, over the baggage claim area where you have the highest traffic area through Terminal One.
So we have three locations here? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Yeah, this, this is gonna have three different locations.
Okay.
And this one is the wall wrap. So it can be, uh-oh, what happened?
See, each one is a part of the package and has its different pricing.
Yeah, and that's really what it is. And we don't have to go through, I mean, I just wanna show you what they are. And then at the end, what I can do is if you want, that we can just look at the different packages together. But I wanted you just to be able to see, you know, what the different options are, what the inventory is. Because if we wanted to start, you know, by summer, if we wanted to start by May, then, you know, we have to get started and decide what we would wanna do for each one. This one is in the international area. So pretty much they're all in the baggage claim. You see the different sizes, what the difference in the prices. A lot of you were concerned about what the prices were for the individual twenty-eight day period versus what it is for the, versus to invest for one year, three years, and five years. And I think that's where we talked about also having our different partners that we have, which is, you know, we talked about Dania Point, we talked about Lucky Fish. We could look at our partners there. And we can also look at our potential partnership with Visit Lauderdale to see if we could come up with something that we could all partner on together to create a great campaign in which we wouldn't be using all of our funds. Bundle Three, it's the same kinda thing. These are the different options. So I won't go through each one. I just want you to see where they would be located in Terminal One baggage claim, Terminal, Terminal One, where the international traffic would come by, if we think we would want to advertise to the people who are traveling internationally. The one down at the left-hand bottom is the tension fabric display. This one is very high, oh, no. Oh, no, 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 no. This is it. Okay, this, the tension fabric display, this one has, this is where NSU was located. This is in Terminal One, in the airport going from concourse A and B, and A and, and C, and concourse C. So concourse One, concourse A, B, and C in Terminal One. Sorry, that's it. All right. Again, you have the tension fabric display. We've seen this one, so we won't go over it again. And I believe we've seen the wall wrap, which this one is where you have the arrivals for the, that are located in the international arrivals. The cost for production installation is a little bit cheaper here. And then you can see how the prices are reduced for the net negotiated rate, the longer you invest in each one. This one has two, the tension fabric display, it has two different locations as you're coming. This captures one hundred percent of the terminal traffic heading to concourses A, B, and C. And so you have the negotiated net rate for what that would be for one year, three years, and five years. And what that is a significant difference if we just did the monthly rate. So it does make sense to invest over the long term. How long you would want to invest would make, would make the difference depending on what we decided as a commission. And here again, you have another baggage claim. Thank you. You would have a tension fabric display in baggage claim one with the tension fabric display. There'd be two different locations for this one. And you can look at what it would be for one year, five years, and one year, three year, and five years. This is a larger display and it does have unskippable media where the people would have to stay and look at the advertisement. Bundle Four, this is the last one. This is the largest one, but it has six different locations. So basically, I won't go through the same ones if we've already seen them, but this one has six different locations that it captures and reaches the domestic as well as the international passengers. And it is in different concourses throughout the airport. But this has a lot of exposure with six different, we can concentrate in one terminal, we can concentrate in all four terminals, and we can concentrate either wide or we can narrow our focus just to one, to one, to one area. Again, we've seen this one, so I'm not gonna go back over it. The tension fabric banner, I think we've seen this one as well, but I just want you to show you what is in the package for each one. We have seen this one, but just remind you that this is in two locations. It captures a hundred percent of the traffic, one of the departures, and it goes through concourses A, B, and C. And this is a very popular, very popular advertising location. We've seen this one, and we have seen this one. And I believe we have seen this one as well. So these are, this is if they've combined them, they're in different parts of the airport. But what I think is most important is to look at all four of the bundles and look at what the inventory is and who it's targeting. Terminal One, again, we said captures the absolute most traffic. It contains the Southwest. It has all of, I think has twenty-six percent, thirteen percent, and eighteen percent in Terminal One. And if you look at the inventory, we would just decide what we would want to have. The rate, you can look at the rate differences for one, twelve thousand dollars per combined rate card versus what it'd be for the negotiated rate, two thousand dollars less. But if you look at the five-year bundle package, you can see that it is significantly less than the per-period package price. So, and the installation price is much cheaper over a five period. So Bundle Two then becomes the next most expensive per period, and then Bundle Three, and then Bundle Four. But what I think is most important is to look at the bundles per traffic. So we looked at, I had them to look at the percentage of coverage, which is fifty-five percent in Bundle One, and that captured Terminal One, Two, Three, and Four. Bundle Two, which just looks at Terminal One and Four. Bundle Three, which just looks at Terminal One. And then Bundle Four, which looks at Terminal One, Three, and Four, which captures the Spirit and the JetBlue, and it has all of the, and it captures Terminal One, which has the most highly trafficked areas. And that's why that percentage would be the most expensive. But if you look at the percentage of coverage, it's thirty-eight percent versus Bundle One, which is fifty-five percent. So Bundle One would, would look like the most recommended, the highly recommended one, where you get the most coverage for the most amount of traffic, the most amount of traffic. So it is important to note that the period days, if you just go by period, the prices are subject to change, whereas if you're locked in for one year, you're locked into that price. But there is a possibility of a ten percent coverage for the three and five years. And so basically, this breaks it all down from Bundle One, Two, Three, and Four, what the long-term special rate is for each one of the bundles, what's it look like over one year versus five years, how much you're saving over an entire year, which is thirty-four thousand in Bundle One, thirty-seven thousand in Bundle Two, fifty-seven thousand in Bundle Three, and sixty-six thousand in Bundle Four. And so they look over a five-year term, what the year-over-year increase is, and you can see that for each bundle. So at this point, I would like to do one more slide for you. And, you know, this is the QR code area and area, era. This is the QR code era. And so if you put your phone up to this QR code, you should be able to, it'll go, and it should be able to go directly to the Dania Beach website. So we do have QR code options as well for the airport. And so it's just a matter of deciding if we're interested in looking at the different kinda bundle options or if we're looking at the different, if we wanna look at the different bundle options versus the one-year, three-year, and five-year periods. So if you have any questions or if you wanna go back to anything, please let me know. But I know that was long, but it is comprehensive and you can definitely take it home and digest it more if you'd like and ask questions. But at this time, I'm gonna turn it over.
All right, I have a question. I don't see any of these that keeps us in our budget of fifty thousand dollars. Unless I'm not seeing it correctly. I was over here trying to do the numbers. But I wanna, I guess I wanted to know, what are our options for the fifty thousand dollar budget? Are we not doing that?
No, we had already talked, I thought the last time we had the conversation, we weren't just going to just do it on our own, that we were going to reach out to our partners to, that fifty thousand dollars would be our part of our skin in the game. And then we would reach out to our partners or our potential partners to see if they wanted to have skin in the game as well, so that wouldn't just be our-
So, okay, so this is-
Our budget.
This is saying that, you know, so for instance, we would have to go out and get twenty-five thousand dollars in the sponsorships at the cheapest rate to, you know, to do that. And then that only kinda leaves Bundle One unless we go and get forty-five thousand more dollars of... Okay, so that was my question. My question was, which one of these keeps us in the fifty thousand dollars? And you're saying, okay, this is the cost, knowing that we're gonna go outside and get other sponsorships?
Absolutely. Unless, unless you don't, but I think it would, it would not be physically responsible. You could do it under fifty thousand dollars, but you're not gonna get the cheaper rate for the thirteen year, I mean, for the thirteen period versus the thirteen, thirty-nine versus the sixty-five period. So-
Okay.
Okay, so I have some questions. It's per period, right? So these numbers are per period?
These are per, these are per period with, for the annual, depending on which you're, which one you're looking at.
Right, so like a five, the five years, sixty-one, fifty per period for the, for Bundle One, whereas one year it's eighty-four hundred.
Right.
Okay, so that's, if you're talking the sixty-five, that's a lot. Anyway, so two things. First of all, has anybody talked to Spirit or JetBlue? Because they're obviously located here. And if we're talking about it being in their terminal where they're located, they might have an interest in getting involved in this and potentially donating some time or money or, oh, money, obviously, to help with it.
Currently, we're working through the mayor. Currently, we're working with Natalie Martinez. As you know, we passed a resolution and sent her a letter as well. I think right now their key focus is the merger.
Yeah.
But she also said, hey, be it Spirit or be it JetBlue with both conversations that we had, we're gonna have a presence here and we're gonna work together as a team. So yeah, certainly, we're gonna knock on, on that door. So if we can get something for free-
That would be much better.
And if they're gonna be in the airport and they could just put at Dania Beach or whatever.
Whatever it might be.
That's, that's a conversation for sure we're gonna have.
Okay, so that's one. Two, I, again, I am not a marketing expert. I do marketing, but I, it's, I am not the expert in this field. But I would have a concern, although it is a cheaper rate to go with the long-term, the five-year special rate, that if this campaign does not, is not effective, or as effective as we would like it to be, then we are locked into it for five years. So I would be a little hesitant to go for the five-year package just because it's cheaper. Because we don't know what's gonna hap, I mean, anything can happen in a year, two years, or what have you. So I, I mean, and things change. And there might be other things that we want to focus on as far as marketing is concerned. And if we can't change that, that would be a bit of a concern for me. Or like I said, if it goes into the, into the airport, I mean, not everybody markets in the airport. It seems like it would be a great place to market, but we don't know yet. Maybe it wouldn't be. So to put that much money into something without knowing what the potential outcome would be, I'm a little hesitant to do that. So, that's all.
Can I speak to that? That's a valid concern. That's why I think it's important for us to get our brand story and our message that we want to campaign together so that, that we're, we're sure that this is what we would wanna do. Again, even, and I'm not married to the five year. I just don't think that we should definitely, I definitely don't think we should do month to month. But when you look at the five year, you do have the option and the opportunity to change your branding. You would just have to pay for the production installation, you know, cost again. So even if you took the longer-term rate, if you saw after one year that it wasn't working, then you could change it to something else. I get the concerns about the five year, but that's where, you know, obviously, their marketing comes in because it becomes cheaper the longer you're there. What we don't wanna do, I don't think is just, you know, start and stop. We would really wanna look at, you know, at least a year and see how that would pan out and then come back and see. But maybe even before that, you know, we can look, I would love to hear your thoughts about what you thought about the actual branding inside of the airport, what they presented versus what we've talked about already with Visit Lauderdale, because I think there's more to putting our story together. But if we're looking short-term, then short-term could also be doing something for this fiscal year, seeing how it works, and then moving on to something more where we're talking about our campaign and our, and our story a little bit more to make it cohesive.
Well, then what I think we need to do is wait to see what Visit Lauderdale has to offer us as far as what their packages are and what they include before we make a decision. Because if they're doing something, they've already said, they've decided they're gonna have to put the money into, into Clear Channel in order to advertise at the airport. I'd like to see what we could do together to see if it would help reduce some of the cost overall.
Just get a piece of their pie.
Yeah, and also approach other sponsors as well. But I, and my concern is not that we can't change the, the design for the, over the five years. My concern is more that if we start advertising, but we literally don't see anything change significantly as a result. So, you know, and it does take time. It takes time to build up a marketing. It does, you have to keep putting it out there and you have to keep doing things. And but at the same time, you know, if you're locked into five years and after two years, you're literally not seeing any major change, then you're still locked in for another three years. And even if you change it, it's, you're still locked in for another three years. And that money might be better used someplace else. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate that if we were just to do the rest of this five, this period, it would be fifty thousand dollars for the remaining periods for two, twenty, twenty-three. So we could do, just use our fifty thousand for the remaining of this period and then look at it. And that was just, it's something that came up. So if we wanted to, we have that option.
I know that, I'm listening to what you all are saying and trying to workshop this at the same time. One way I think that we can track it, because it's very hard to track like this type of marketing, it is very hard to see the return on that investment and say, you know, this did or did not work without a call to action. So I think if we put some type of call to action, if we maybe reached out to, I don't know, Fibers, this first thing came to my head. And if Fibers wanted to be a part of this and they put a discount on that, you know, if you click on this QR code and get your discount, that's something that you can track. So I would advise to, who came up with the, see the pier, stay for the cheer? Cause I feel like I saw those before, though, in our initial. So I think that was in our initial, that was in our initial brand rollout. Yeah, well, no, it was in, I think it was in our initial brand rollout when we had to choose for it. Yeah, so I think they kinda just took those. So I wouldn't wanna reuse those just because I, I'm almost certain we've already used those. But I do think we need, whatever we do, we need to have some type or some form of call to action so we can see how effective it is. so we can see how effective it is. And even if those, we could look at it after, if we did three years or whatever, we could look at it after a year and say, okay, well, this worked or this didn't work, or if it was successful, okay, let's choose another restaurant, let's choose another business. But I think those are, those call to actions are, are really, really important to, to try and track the progress of, of any campaign. And again, I, I, I understand, you know, trying to really understand what the brand is and all those things. That's why you have to continuously have different campaigns and not necessarily the same campaign, but different campaigns. You know, we can have a campaign of who we are, you know, and that could be Dana Beach, who we are and have a campaign. And then a hundred and twenty if they have a campaign. And all those things are consistent to Dana Beach, see it, live it, love it. And, you know, and them telling that story, um, and that's why public relations is so important because they do a heavy portion of storytelling. A lot of their job is that storytelling portion. So I also would want, um, whoever our communications director is to have some type of experience in PR, even though they may want to hire someone, because storytelling is, is going to, to sell people. You, you tug into their emotions, um, and, and you sell that. And so I, I just want to make sure that we can not, number one, I'm, I'm not sure if we can change, have different graphics all throughout the packages. So if we chose a bundle and maybe the hanging banner, could that be different than the wrap banner or do they all have to be the same?
No, I think you can have, you can have whatever you want. You can have different, different images. That's just what they put together.
Okay, okay, so it was just simple for them. Right, okay, okay. Got it. So, so that would be my only recommendation of whatever we're doing, if we're going to wait on Visit Lauderdale. In the meantime, we need to come up with some type of a sponsorship deck that we can then go out and, and try to raise those funds of who wants to be a part of it and give them a certain amount of time to respond so we can have something in concrete. And then we'll know the budget that we're working with. And so safer in a month, if we could secure five businesses, we know at, at a certain rate on the, on that, on that sponsorship deck, we know what our budget is then, and then making sure we have some type of an action, call to action.
And, and I was just gonna add, I mean, cause we have to, part of my concern about the cost of it and, and really trying to get more sponsorships and people that are going to help with this is because a lot of what's happening right now and people discovering Dana Beach is kind of happening organically because of Dana Point, because of, you know, COVID going away for the most part, because of just people traveling again and just exploring different places. So I'm, I'm a little concerned because I just, I know that there are people that are literally coming here just because they're traveling again and because they maybe go to Dana Point and say, oh, what, what else is going on here? Um, and I've, and I've heard that from people. Um, like people have just found us, you know, just found the rest of the city because they went, maybe went to Dana Point and then started driving around a little bit, um, or flew into town for, you know, for a cruise or something and, you know, wanted to know where else to go and they got sent to the beach or sent to the casino or something like that. So it's, I, I just, I, I think, you know, it's, I, we definitely need to do more marketing. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I just think that this is very expensive. And if we're not getting a whole lot of sponsorships, um, I just, I get concerned that we might be spending money unnecessarily at, at a higher rate as opposed to like spending it more frugally and then using the money to do other things in different areas. That's all. That's all I'm concerned about.
I wanted to, um, Candido just reminded me, um, just to, to let you know, because we know that there's X amount of ways to get to and from the airport. Um, and two key areas to come to and, and, and from the airport is Federal and Griffin that are ours. So what Fernando is doing, working with Denzer and Candido, we're, we're gonna put out a, an RFP or get quotes according to the amount. And um, as we get ready, it's gonna be a surprise, but might as well talk about it since we're talking about marketing. Um, so we're, we're gonna have like three different seasons of, of banners, right? And we're gonna kick it off with Federal. And so imagine the holiday season. So we'll have November, December, January. And it's the message from Dana Beach for the happy holidays, right? And then we fast forward to, to a, a, a generic Dana Beach that we would put out for the next three months. And then you have May, June, July, which is like a memorial, Fourth of July, Flag Day, the whole Americana, which will be, you know, Dana Beach with, with the flag. So, um, this is something that we're gonna include in, in the budget and we're gonna saturate Federal and Griffin with those beautiful banners. Um, so we'll be marking our territory. And then we have the centerpiece that is our, our welcome to Dana Beach sign, which is on the corner of, of Federal and, and, and Griffin that during the holidays, we're gonna augment it. You know, um, whether it's the, 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 the January, December, eh, holiday spirit or the May, June, July with, with the flags. So we, we have banners coming, um, and we also have, um, an opportunity to partner. Eh, what Commissioner James said about those videos that you guys did, they were approximately twelve hundred dollars each video. It was not expensive. And now if somebody complained because they were a business, then why not them? What we could do is, okay, it's twelve hundred dollars. If you want us to come and do a video, you, it could be like a fifty fifty, so they pay six hundred dollars and we pay the other six hundred. So whether it's Lucky Fish or, or the Quarter Deck, um, or even Dana Point, but it costs twelve hundred dollars. Um, and you guys did a great job in those videos. So those, those are all the things that, that you may want to consider as well.
Commissioner James?
Yes, two things. I'm, I'm glad that we're finally getting those banners. Um, I actually, I don't, I'm not sure if you were here yet or not. I know that Commissioner Luella was, I mean, Vice Mayor Luella was here at that time where, um, Bob Shapiro was supposed to be putting together some group of stakeholders and they were supposed to be doing all this and then it kind of fell on us because it didn't go through. So I think that is, is, is an amazing opportunity and it's been an amazing opportunity. I'm glad that it's finally happening. So kudos to you and your team. Uh, that's, that's long overdue. As far as these videos, I, I wouldn't, I, I think there may be an issue then if we're going to charge some businesses and other businesses not charge them. What I would recommend is saying, you know what?
Oh, we'll charge them all.
Well, we've already done some for free is what I'm saying.
No, no, right, moving, moving forward.
Or, or what we can do is annually put this in our budget and not choose the same businesses and make, you know, and, and make sure that we are rotating businesses. Not saying that necessarily because someone comes and complains that we're gonna do their business next. But if we, if we have this as an annual expense and you're saying it's only twelve hundred dollars, you know, which is what, six thousand dollars or something like that, that could either come out of our contingency and we can earmark that. So we can annually have fresh faces or whoever sitting up here to, to continue to market our city. And, and, you know, I would just hate that we've done two cycles of it to come back and say, you know, you, you want this so we're gonna go half and half. I, I'm not sure how, how that looks versus if we can just put that in our budget to do it every year.
However you want to do it, but I just, I mean, it was twelve hundred. Let's say, let's say it's a little bit more because it's two years removed, you know, and maybe it's fifteen hundred each. But yeah, however you want to do it, but it was really good.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, I'll, I'll not prolong, prolong this and talk in circles. But, uh, for me, I would like to come back with all of the options, all of the opportunities um, and, and see how we can collectively look at this and, and in a timely manner because every minute a day that goes by, we're, I don't want to say wasting time, but we're missing out on opportunities that we could have to market a city.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we, 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 we're staying focused on what we said versus what we're, what we're saying now. So pre, previously, we said we were going to budget fifty thousand dollars towards the airport advertising and fifty thousand towards other air, I mean, towards other advertising. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're staying focused on that goal and whether we do that with our partners or whether we do that, you know, however we explore those options, we get information back from Visit Lauderdale, we create our own bundle package where we're only spend the fifty thousand, whatever we decide to do, but then to stay focused on, okay, this is definitely what we want to do with the airport and this is definitely what we want to do with the other part of the advertising dollars because it seems to, to be getting commingled. And, and, and I want to make sure that we, we have a clear direction forward with clear next steps of how we're moving forward. And, and right now, it, it's getting, it's getting commingled as far as I'm concerned. I love the, the, it was I Love Local. I think the campaign should be see it, live it, love it. What does everybody see, live and love about Dana Beach? We can all go, obviously, I would go to the beach and talk about see it. But it, or whatever it is, that, those, those things are separate, but we, we, we ended on the airport. So I want to make sure that we have a clear direction with what we're doing on that front and then figure out how we're going to do the next steps with the other advertising dollars that we have just so that we're, we're not going back and forth, you know, just giving, you know, different brainstorming, different advertising ideas because we, we could do that all night and it's exciting, but I still have a paper to turn in. Thank you.
I was, no, I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, I was just gonna say, one, I, I, I don't, I don't think it's getting commingled. I think we did say that. I think it's just we need to wait to see what everybody else has to offer so we can make sure that we're using our money wisely. Um, so I think that's what, I think the, the consensus was is that we need to see what's being offered from Visit Lauderdale as well as any other potential partners. Um, the only other thing I wanted to add though is with regard to the I Love Local things, I, I actually don't really have an issue with charging people at this point because it was initially done for a different purpose. At that time, it was done because of COVID and trying to get people to go out. Again, this is an actual ongoing thing in the future of, um, of promoting the businesses that are in the city. Um, I mean, it, it just, I don't know. I, it's, it's a different purpose now. So it's not like it, before it wasn't really advertising for the businesses as much as it was just trying to get people to get back out into things and get involved after COVID because everybody was hurting at that time. So that we were just trying to, you know, help the businesses out a little bit, but, um, and the city, but anyway, that's all.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Davis, I guess you want more direction on what we're gonna do. Uh, I just don't want to jump ahead and spend fifty thousand dollars and, and like you said, make a, a long-term commitment for five years for something that we're not actually, we're not exactly sure if it's gonna pay off. Um, I, I'd, I'd like the idea of advertising more within our boundaries, you know, instead of, instead of the airport. Uh, you know, me personally, I don't count, but it's just that, the airport advertising never really gets me, you know? I, I, I just, like, when you go to the airport, I've been through it a few times since our last meeting on this. And like I said, they, they have one specific item and it's like, visit the Everglades, you know, go on an airboat ride. Or it, it's just, and they're spending a lot of money on that. For us as a city, it, I just, I just don't want to, I'm not saying it's a waste of money, but it's just, uh, I just want to be as effective as we can when it comes to advertising. And I don't want to, I don't want to make a commitment. It, it's a big commitment, you know, uh, for five years. And, and if you just do it by period, it almost doesn't make sense, like you said. Yeah, you're saving a lot more money by doing a long-term period. And once we get another partner involved, you know, say we get, uh, three separate businesses involved and then it's gonna be kind of jockeying on who we support, on how much money they gave us versus the, the other one and, and how much we're gonna promote our city versus their business. It just kind of seems a little complicated, uh, when it gets to that. But yes, I, 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 I love the idea with Visit Fort Lauderdale, how, you know, you guys, you guys have to pay for the airport. So if, if we team up with you and we get, uh, some spotlight through teaming up with you at the airport with Visit Fort Lauderdale, I think that's, that's a great idea. And, uh, apparently, you know, your contracts aren't five years as well. So it, it probably, we could do yearly contract, correct? So I, I say, I'd say that almost sounds a little more conducive to what we're trying to do. Uh, so yeah, if you guys are okay with that, I think that's, you know, we just have to get all the packages together. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I just want to be clear that you're, you're not locked into five years. You don't have to do that, okay?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. But like I said, that makes the most sense monetarily wise. You know, you're, you're spending twelve thousand dollars a month versus, you know, uh, sixty five hundred dollars a month.
I got you. Yeah, we're good. But we're, we're waiting for the information. We got it. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, I have one thing I'm gonna bring up, uh, when it comes to advertising and marketing within the city. And I know that our Dana Beach Chamber of Commerce sent out a email to our city staff. Uh, and they were requesting, well, they, they gave us an opportunity to be a trustee member. These benefits include city spotlights on the homepage, unlimited email blast, sharing the city Facebook posts, invitation to events, admittance to business after hours, special marketing opportunities, listing in truck these sections of websites, special link to your personal business website. You know, they repost everything that you have on social media. You know, every city, uh, supports their Chamber of Commerce and, uh, you know, I know that we fell off a few years ago. But, you know, these trustee dues are ten thousand dollars for the year. You know, if you have two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars to spend, I think this is a good beginning and it's ten thousand dollars. And we, you know, we know what we're gonna get with the Chamber of Commerce. So I would ask for the support from the commission regarding that to, um, you know, become a trustee member for the Dana Beach Chamber of Commerce. Commissioner James?
You might want to wait until fall fiver here because I know we have a lot of different opinions, number one. I don't.
But I don't want to wait a whole other month.
I said for the next commission, I mean, that's fine. What I, what I will say is, I also had a, a conversation with the chamber and I do agree, I think we, we are spending eleven thousand dollars on an ad for the CRA. Just put things in perspective.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand, um, for, for whatever, uh, we, we just, we just approved it. Yes, ma'am, just a thousand. So.
Eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand. I read the backup. Yeah, mm-hmm, because I was seeing if anybody's gonna say something, but nobody said nothing. So.
I think it's eleven thousand five hundred. Eleven five.
Eleven thousand five hundred, just, just, okay. Okay, I didn't, that, I didn't, I didn't know, y'all ain't know that. I'm just saying. So I wasn't saying it as a surprise. I'm just, I'm just putting that into perspective right now of what I'm saying. So we just spent eleven thousand five hundred dollars on a publication. And when you look at what is included in, in the trustee membership from the chamber, I don't think it's unreasonable to have email blast, spotlights. I asked, I also asked how many events that, um, we could come to, uh, once a month for, at no cost. Uh, you can bring whoever you want. Those are after hours, spotlighting our businesses. Um, introductions, um, listing on the website, links to personal, um, the personal business website, free membership in the directory, um, additions to special, all of our special events on their, on their calendar. I mean, the list goes on. It's, it's, it's a lot. But I, I'm just saying that ten thousand dollars, I don't think is, is unreasonable to support our chamber who is going to, number one, you know, post our things, email blast, share things on LinkedIn, share things on Facebook with, where they get different visibilities and they, you know, sponsor those ads and that, that taps into a whole nother, you know, audience, if you will. Um, I, I just don't think, you have my support for it. Uh, maybe make it an action item on discussion and possible action at the next, uh, meeting, so it could be formalized, but that's me.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You, you may not have to put it as an action item because I'm just gonna.
That was gonna be our recommendation.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, my, my issue with Chamber had, was in the past and continued to me, the fact that we were giving them like forty thousand dollars a year and they wouldn't turn over their books like they were required to. That was my biggest issue because they weren't in compliance with, with. We, we wanted, no, we wanted them to comply with their contract.
No, the audit.
Their audit, right. They, they were supposed to comply with an audit and they refused to do that. And that was the issue. I don't have a problem with a ten thousand dollar payment for a trustee membership. That's fine because that's a whole different thing. So I'd be in support of that. I don't have a problem with it. Um, the, the, like I said, the problem that I always had was the fact that they just simply weren't in compliance. And if they, you know, and, and I don't understand the reason why they wouldn't do that. And if they could have just done it, we probably wouldn't be in the same position that we're in today without the chamber. So I would be in support of putting the ten thousand in for the trustee membership. I don't have a problem with that. So you may not need to do it as an action item with the next one. I don't know.
If I met through the mayor, so Eve, uh, our CFO Frank Candido and I met with, um, Pat Chuckerman and, and Ms. Bobby and they put a proposal together. We discussed the pass and, and, and the issues of the forty thousand, so they put this ten thousand, which is very clear what they would do for us. So we were coming at the next being to ask your support. So I'm glad that, that you guys are supporting it because this is very, 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 very clear. And have we written that eleven thousand dollar check yet? Because if we haven't, could, couldn't this, the ten thousand just be part of what the CRA and the city can do together with them?
They approved a contract for some publication, so I think that's already done.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's a separate.
All right, all right. You know me, I would try to get the most that would come.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, so I, I think, I think we have an agreement on that then. We don't even have to bring it on the, on the dais, yeah. Okay, wonderful. All right, anything else? Any, any, any ideas? We might as well spit bomb now if we can. All right. All right. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I actually do have another presentation, but I am not going to do it right now. I actually do, I actually do, but I'm more tired than all of you. So I will not.
No problem. I enjoy your presentations, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. But I do, I always like to end with next steps. I think we did discuss them, but Mayor, if you wouldn't mind just summing it up in a little bottle and putting it in a workshop. And, you know, if we need another workshop, you know, I know we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna talk with Visit Lauderdale a little bit more. But if you would just mind summarizing it for us all so we can clearly see. I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, I'll summarize it in, you know, in my perspective, I guess, from the meeting. All right, number one, we're trustee members with Chamber of Commerce, all right? Boom, done there. Number two, we're gonna see, we're gonna see what Visit Lauderdale, what their package is, what they have to offer. And if you could, when you come in, you could give us more of an idea on your partnership with the airport and how you could provide us with that. And then we will see possibly how we would find sponsors, what sponsors we would find for the airport if we're gonna advertise the city with the airport. And just figure out how we're gonna do it, how much, you know, time we're gonna give those advertisers versus our city. And, yeah, we have to put everything together and I would like to make a decision on, you know, investing some of this $50,000 that we have either way, towards the airport, towards Visit Lauderdale, towards, you know, more local street signs. But just basically, right now, it's Visit Lauderdale and the airport. And I think Camille, I command, Camilla, I'm sorry, Ca- Ca- Camilla, sorry. Sorry, Camilla. I, I'm excited for your presentation and I look forward to what you have to offer us. And the fact that we're one of the first cities to do this with Fort Lauderdale. And like I said, it's fine, you're flying to Fort Lauderdale Airport. So, you know, if Dana Beach is right next door, just south, that's fine, that you make it known. You know, I'd rather us be known than Hollywood or Pompano. And actually, other cities, if they see this is successful, they might join on. And, you know, I saw the Everglades in there. There's no Everglades in Fort Lauderdale, so we could have, it's the end of our. Take it out of the contingency?
Contingency?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. All right, everybody. Thank you very much, meeting adjourned. Good night.